I'd be happy to start.
What did you think?
To the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All signed, Warren. Does anybody note any errors or missing from the town and area select meeting minutes?
In the joint select board meeting, under the header says July 13th, so July 31st.
I didn't actually do that. I feel like I've gone to the principal about this. So, I have five packets. Yep, per your instructions. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Come here, I'll help sell them.
I can make that change.
Okay, this is just kind of a rundown of everybody, okay? And then I've just got them divided here.
Make a motion to accept a change of the date for the, for the venue.
You're very welcome. I'll give you a handy two stack. Yeah. One stack. There's one to stack.
It's been moved in the second day that we...
Yep, because everybody gets a...
Approved the town and area select meeting minute for June 20th. But the date being ten of the joint select board meeting, all is in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
There's eight of them. Okay. This is, this is a letter.
Okay.
The, does she want to go with anything else? No. She wanted to give us a letter.
You're one of the noisy girls.
No.
No.
They were in order, but they're kind of not in order now that we just...
Is this email exchange offer they handed out?
Yeah. That was, somebody's broker was supposed to have sent me an offer and got sick, so they sent it to me. Okay. Okay. All right. Do you want me to address everybody?
No, just the boys.
Okay.
Just wait for Gary, he'll, he'll tell you when.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Announcements? Public comment? So, public hearing of possible action. Now we'll get to the review office for the sale of the Nury Church.
Okay. So, I gave you, there's eight of them. The first one is for 56,500. And that came in the, it's an email. This is the one that his broker was sick and didn't send over the offer. So I just said, look, I will just present, you know, your intention. If that's the one that you guys want to go with, we could pursue it further into the purchase and sales format. But that's number one. So number two is Nelson Peterson. And he's offering 50,000. And do you want to go through them for specifics, or first do you want to just go through them for price?
Or if we go twice for it?
Okay. So then that's a 50, that one is for 50,000. These are all cash. The third one is Rob Oliverio, and he's offering 150,000. That's your top offer right there for, for price-wise. And everything really, because he doesn't care about anything, so. Number four is for 50,000. It's Eric and Leslie Weeks. Number five is an email exchange that came from Karen Black Lakeblock for 30,000. And the reason that didn't get put into the purchase and sales format is because she really couldn't understand. I kept telling her, no, we need to put it into the format. And then she sent me this letter, and I just said, based on the fact that it was substantially lower than everybody else, I just said, we'll just keep it in the letter format. And if you want me to go back to her and ask for a purchase and sales, I certainly can. Number six is from an LLC, and they are offering 87,000. And then number seven is from The Butchers, Thatcher and Charlene, and they're offering 112,000. And number eight is from Tara Chaplin, and she's offering 90,000. And I'm happy to go through them for specifics whenever you, if you guys want.
What kind of specifics do you want, Rob Oliverio?
Okay, that's pretty cut and dry. He basically wants to close on August 1st. He's a cash buyer. He's, we excluded the bell and podium. Everybody knew that was being taken out, so those were excluded. And then, so he said everything else in there can stay. And he doesn't, you know, he, he's not hung up on any inspections, or he doesn't need anything like that. He is from Florida, from Key West. There's, on the last page, there's a letter of recommendation from, from, he is currently doing a restoration of a 1903 church in Key West, Florida. And he has sent this over just so that, you know, people could, could see that. I mean, that's his passion, and that's what he does. So, he's selling it. He told me he's selling a business, and he wants to buy the church, and then he will, you know, renovate, restore. So, that's his story. He's here on vacation, and he's come over twice to look at it.
So no contingencies about the driveway?
No.
Okay.
Nope. I gave him your full packet.
Yeah.
He's, he had all, he has all the information and, you know.
So is this more or less going to preserve it the way a church is, or is he going to do something else?
I think they're going to live in it, but it will not change, it will look the same. They may put some glass or something on the back to add light in it. But he, he basically wants to restore what's there. He does not want to tear it down. So there is a concern, obviously, with the, the bell tower. That's pretty, so they'll have to, you know, that's, there, there was a lot of leaking when I was there showing it. Water was coming in through where the, the bell tower comes into the main part of the church. So, I mean, but he was there during a rainy day. He saw that. He had to, you know, he walked all around it. As I said, he's come twice. And then he, he sent over that letter from the church renovation that he's doing now in Key West.
Now, if he's going to move here, is this going to be like a summer home, or...
I don't think he'll be here full time, full time. I think he'll be here part-time. He has a wife, and she said, you know, I don't think she's like a winter person. Just for the matter. I don't think it's going to be...
And the couple winters in Key West, you wouldn't be...
Right.
Give them a guy that lives in Key West, then he comes up here for the winter and goes down there in the summer.
That's different. Yep. Well, I know the people that bought the Claxton House, your old, I think that was your old house at one point in time, wasn't it? Across from...
Oh, Con, oh, yeah. Well, we took care of the neighbors, it was my son's.
They're from Florida.
Yeah.
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 He won't come up here in the winter either. She does. She comes up here and fun skis.
So, I, as for the bell, my thoughts was we would keep the bell for historic purposes. If somebody was going to tear it down, we should keep the bell. And the podium, we could use anyway.
Yeah.
But he doesn't have any stipulations either, so...
I don't know what it would cost us to get the bell out of there.
Right. So...
If he doesn't want the bell, and I guess we could probably do something with it.
Well, we went in, we told them that the bell wasn't staying, because Loretta had said to me, tell them the bell and the podium aren't staying. So everybody who looked at it had the same instruction.
Okay.
They, they knew.
So, do you want her to go through and see what anybody else has for stipulations on each one?
If we're going by the high price, if there's any stipulation, that's probably where I'd go. I mean, if somebody else wants to, I don't have a problem.
Well, the second, The Butchers, do you know what they're...
Yep, so they're, I don't know what they're doing, like, but it seems like they, they have a, an agent outside of myself. And they are, they were pretty specific on, what did they say? They wanted inspections for code conformance, which, I mean, yeah, it's not in conformance, most of it, but... And then what is the other one? They had, they had a list of things they wanted to do. Purchase of properties contingent on the following: approval of application for residential occupancy within 15 business days by buyer. So they're going to turn it into a residence as well. Approval for a well within 15 business days by buyer. Approval for residential septic design within 15 days by the buyer. And the design we have is not two years old, so that they should, they should be fine with that. Yep. Approval for a driveway permit with the state within 15 business days by buyer. All contingencies to be satisfactory by buyer within 15 days.
I feel like 15 days dealing with the state, probably.
Yeah. Wishful thinking, right?
So...
I would say...
In my opinion, based on that, they're out.
Yeah.
I mean, I would ask you, what is the chance that somebody's not going to get a driveway permit?
It's a state road. I don't have any say about that.
With the, with the building, I'm not saying they could or they couldn't, but most generally, if the building's already there, they kind of got to give it to them.
Right. Right. And they don't want them parking in the, in the road.
It's also, when it comes to DOT, it's also going to matter if it's residential or, I had one call that they want to turn it into a hunting lodge. And that's, that's going to depend on how many trips per day, as to how wide that entrance needs to be.
Right.
Commercial versus residential.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yes, I had somebody that wanted to turn it into a paddle, paddle ball.
Albert. Pickleball?
Pickleball. Pickleball.
Oh.
Yeah. That's what he wanted to do with it. I don't know anything about pickleball, but...
Neither. I just know it's pretty popular. It was a big thing on the news, he hasn't had about it yet.
Yeah. He also didn't have any money, so he didn't put together an offer, so it was...
Taste of champagne and a price for beer.
And the LLC is actually The Misshews, which just, they used to own Mallard Mart and sold that. So, that's who that LLC is, if you're wondering who that is.
Did they have stipulation?
I see they told the restaurant down there today, but they noticed it there.
Yeah. He did, yeah. He didn't, he, he, he didn't do it. They sold it off, obviously, but he said that was, that made him sad. So he, his one stipulation was a permit, driveway permit. That was the only thing he was concerned with.
Which one was that?
That is the LLC number six.
Okay.
Which is E, E D N A B L, LLC.
Yeah, I see it now.
Yeah.
Does number eight have any contingencies?
Number eight was the last one that came in. He came in through another broker. Offer contingent on general building inspection and satisfactory soils test. I would steer clear of building inspection on that myself, though. Just because I feel like there's too many, even though people say, oh, I'm an old home person, I, I'm not looking for anything in particular. I just, you know, I just want to make sure every, every single time it's, yeah. Once it comes up, and then they're like, well, why isn't this to code? Why isn't that to code law? Because it's built in 1904, right?
Right.
Well, if it was up to me, I would either do the Rob Oliveira or the LLC. My opinion.
Two choices.
The LLC has some stipulations there, right?
Driveway, driveway.
And I think, you know, those are people that were kind of sort of familiar with.
And then... They understand the, like, the land. Right. That would be what I would say about that, too. Yeah.
And then the other guy, you know, restoring other buildings, I feel like he kind of... Wouldn't know what he's getting into.
Sure.
You know, a letter of recommendation that he writes?
No. Right.
Right. No.
I, I will say that I didn't hear one person say that they wanted to tear it down out of this whole group, so, people.
They told us if they tear it down, then they can't ugly build back.
Right. Right. Exactly.
I guess for conversation, comes of, yeah. Conversation, I would make a motion we go with the Rob Oliverio, or whatever.
Oliverio.
Oliverio, yeah.
Number three.
I'm reading the first part of it, then I had the other two letters on it.
Yeah.
So he's the one that really doesn't have any concerns whatsoever?
Right. He has no contingencies. He did not send me over his proof of funds because he's on vacation, and he said he could get them to me on Monday, when he gets back home. But again, he's selling a business, too, so, you know, he appears to have any sense of that. But I do not have that. The, The Misshews, who are the LLC, they are doing a 1031 exchange, which means they sold an investment property, and that money is, is parked in a...
To pay the, pay the taxes.
Yeah. It's, yeah. And then an attorney has it. So once they come to closing, that attorney sends it over, so.
Does it sound like he's going to leave it wherever it is, or is he going to, he probably...
Misshews?
Put some, uh, all of...
Oliverio.
Oliverio. He, he did, he, he didn't, he didn't talk about moving it. He just talked about putting some windows in the back away from the street.
He more, he more or less is going to leave it like a church.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. He lives in the, the, he lives in the church that he's restoring now. They, they made an apartment in the back of it, and he's been doing this for a year, I think, this restoration. And when I say restoration, he went into great lengths to, to share with me that he sourced the materials from very specific. It's all old. I mean, he didn't go, nothing new was going in it. It's all, it was all vintage materials. He sounds like he knows what he's doing, let's just put it that way.
And he's the only one that's come forward and said that he really would like to keep it more or less as a church, or...
The, The Misshews are going to keep it. It will not change the, it will not change a visual. They're going to make it into livable space and rent it, is what they want to do. He's the one that has the $87,000 offer and its contingent upon him getting his driveway comment. And both of them actually said the exact same thing about where it steps up in the front, or the back, I should say, away from the street, is where they'll put the bathroom and the kitchen, because it's easy to, you know, pass that crossway, so you can put it down there. So there was no mention of tearing it down.
So you made the motion?
Right.
Yeah, I did.
Well, I will second it.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded that we, I don't know, accept. Is it a purchase agreement, or?
Yep.
That's what it is?
Yeah.
For Rob Oliverio? For 150,000 dollars? And second, is there any more discussion that we can get with that? It does seem to me that they seem to be the ones that's going to try to keep it more like a church. I mean, they're still going to live in it, but they're going to try to keep it more...
Don't do anything with the bell on that, or...
Well, it's already, it's already put in the agreement.
Yeah, it's excluded out right now.
The bell and the podium are coming out.
So we're going to tear that section down.
I don't think he's going to want to tear it down. I think he wants to keep it the way that it is. He's going to have to make the repairs.
Maybe he'll get his own bell.
Well, we don't know what it's going to cost him, or how he's going to, how much he's going to have to take apart to get it fixed, or...
So you guys would have to take the bell out, because we're asking, we're, the town's asking to exclude it. So it would have to be the town's responsibility to take out the bell and the podium prior to the closing. You want it gone before he signs on the dotted line. And that, timing-wise, where he's closing so quickly, you may want to ask him for an extension on that for the same. If you can't get somebody in there to remove the bell, or you may decide, I don't care about the bell, and we just tell him that it's his, and he can do what he wants. Which would probably mean we can make there.
How big that bell is? Would it come up to one of the...
I don't know. I wonder if you'd have to take the roof off to get it out, you know? And the next question is, what are we going to do with it after we have it?
Probably put it right over here for him, in all honesty.
My thoughts was to put it at the great tree, where that tree is that needs to be cut up front.
Okay. Yeah. That's, that's a good thought.
Public construction? I'm going to interject here real quick. With as busy as everyone is trying to get a crane and a crew, and then just off, you know, off the cuff, I'm thinking of that outfit in South Paris that has cranes.
Yeah.
I don't imagine we'll get them quickly.
No. Or reading that Cody's outfit on the wall.
Oh, you're definitely not getting them quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I could contingency that we need...
Extra time to get the bell?
Extra time taking the bell, like 30 days or something. I don't know.
So you, like, 30 days, like, you want them to close on the first, and then...
No, they can close them if they want to, but then we need 30 days to get the bell out.
Get the bell out. Okay.
Or 60 days, whatever, whatever we decide. That gives us a little more wiggle room.
Yeah.
Or if he's going to keep it as a church, it could live right there.
Yeah, that's one of the things, that's why I was asking kind of what we were going to do with it after we got it out. If it's just going to hang around and be a dust collector, then, then we don't need it, you know?
My original thought was keep the bell if somebody was going to tear it down.
Yeah.
It's not like you're going to tear it down and keep it down.
Right.
I mean, what, what kind of damage are we going to do, and how much are we going to have to put back?
Yeah. That's the other thing is, you know, we have to take the roof off, and it's not weather tight. But it isn't probably weather tight now, but...
No, it's not. Unfortunately, no.
There is an interior, like, somebody's screwed, like a...
A little painful to get up there publicly, you know?
Get up there. You know, people do it through that, or... It's pretty fragile, I think. That whole part of the building seems to be fragile.
Right there. When we add that we, we will need 30 or 45 days to kind of make a decision on whether we're actually going to take the bell out, or to get it out, or what. There's a possibility that we leave it, you know, but I don't know. Does that sound like something that would fit the picture?
Wouldn't. We could ask him if he'd be willing to...
Yep.
Accept that, or if he is not tearing it down, if he would like to keep the bell. That preserves this church to just the way it looks right now?
Looks like that.
Yeah.
It can't hurt to do it that way, for... Right. Just ask him? Yeah. Yeah. You want me to step out and see if I can get him on the phone?
Yeah. Guess we kind of need to know.
While you're doing that, we know...
Don't talk about me, okay?
You want to some of the other little things?
A little on the door?
All right, we get, we will come back to this, but we will move on to the remainder, a reminder of the joint select board meeting, which is 7:31, not 7:15. And that's at 5:00?
Yeah.
And by...
Yep. I haven't changed it yet, so... Still the time.
Now, I guess we can go on to the code enforcement program.
Okay. I'm here mainly for the roads, I guess. I have a big typo on my last report, and I apologize for the confusion. Um, paving and shoulder filling is not completed on Timberline, Greenbrier and Skiway. Those did not get paved this year. I apologize. Um, we did do storm damage repairs on Timberline, Greenbrier and Skiway, uh, from the May first storm. They were the last three roads. They were all passable, but the ditches, we didn't want anybody pulling off and, and losing half a vehicle in some of the water ditches that were created. So, that got completed last week, or week, week before.
A little bit of FEMA money's gonna be available, from what I heard in the news.
Yep, and we've already filed our reports preliminarily with FEMA, so they've had all of that. So, that's good. Um, Timberline and Greenbrier, while we were out there, we did discover with our contractor that there's a couple of culverts that cross roads that are completely clogged. And they're the old, like, ten or twelve inch metal culverts. These are something that was laid in place-
When they built it, yeah.
When they built the roads, yeah. So, there's two of those that need to come up and be replaced, as well as one on Valley View. These are all town-owned roads. So, I'm gonna look at the paving schedule, see what we can do. You don't wanna rip up a culvert and not do the road. Patching never goes well when you just patch where the culvert comes out, especially with the amount of water that we have running downhill on all of our roads. So, I'm gonna take a look at the paving schedule, see what happens. Um, the roads that are due, or the only road that's up for next year, is Sunday River Road from the intersection of Monkey Brook Road to Pole One-O-Five, which means nothing to nobody, but it's about eight thousand square feet, uh, eight thousand lineal feet. So, I'll take a look at that section of road, talk to our-
Well, and a half or so.
Yeah, talk to, um, the guy who does our crack sealing, talk, take a look, see what he thinks. You know, maybe we put that off a year. And we do the culvert repairs on Timberline, Greenbrier and Valley View and pave those three roads next year. Just, just kicking these around right now. I just wanted to clarify my road report. Striping, uh, we have our quote for that. Paving done and built. So, that was good news. We were happy to see that bell come in. Yeah, and no, it doesn't happen often, we were happy to see that. But, yeah, they're, with the lovely weather we've had, we're trying really hard to crack seal and then paint. It may end up that the paint gets done first and the crack seal comes after. It's just gonna see how all the contractor's schedules work out. Okay? Any questions about anything else going on in town?
Budget-wise, how are we doing?
For roads?
Yeah.
Better. Uh, oh, well, let me preface that. The storm damage, huh? Puts us way, our budget way out of whack, huh?
Yeah.
People could pay us this year, they could pay us next year.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's something for the weather to consider and think about.
Yeah.
Been talking to the auditor on how they wanna handle it, so. She's supposed to be coming to one of your meetings in August, so.
So, uh, the newberry signs, the signposts are being fabricated. I went with a company that could fabricate and install. And Alan, our, um, man of all trades around town, is also gonna be there to help with the installation. It's nice to have somebody who lives and works for us handy.
We just did a tree cut on the branch road.
Yes, yeah. Alan and Joel for that.
Yeah, I used that for chainsaw draining that day.
Well, I would've cut it, but I didn't have a saw with me the day I noticed it.
Yeah, and that's it.
So, he has no problem with, um, you know, taking as much time as, as you guys need to, to get the bell out. He said that doesn't, anything you need like that does not bother him. He's not gonna be doing anything for, for a year on it anyways.
I guess that answers that question.
Yeah.
I think all that's been moved and seconded, that we accept the decision now. Always in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. And maybe once we start digging into the bell situation-
It might make a difference on what we decide.
I mean, I think that could be a-
Could be like now?
Hold our can of worms, if we start digging into seeing what's gonna take to get that out.
So, um, do you want to push the closing out? Or do you wanna close and just have, um, X number of days to remove the, move the bell? Which is better for you guys?
I don't think we need to push it out, the closing, or just go with the closing with his approval. But we need to take that time.
Okay. Well, do, okay, I'm gonna be, what if we decide, we dig into it and it's, you know, fifty thousand dollars to remove the bell?
Yeah, that's, that's-
Money aside, damages that may incur, you know, that we would have to also put back.
Right.
This man is a professional restoration of churches.
Right.
We're gonna put back brand-new two-by-sixes, brand, you know, whatever it takes, right out of, you know, local lumber yards. It, you know, he may say, I'd rather leave the bell.
Yeah.
I guess that's a conversation maybe we can have with him, if that opens up.
He doesn't care whatever way you guys-
Okay, keep the bell or not keep the bell?
Yes. He doesn't, you know, he's not-
Get one on sometime next week or so. You and I will walk and walk and see what it looks like and it's gonna be to get it out of there.
We're gonna put your grandson up through the hatch.
We'll do some ladder training in here.
Yeah, that, that would bring a lot of truck, that's on, no, let's do that. Okay.
And that way we can get a handle, we'll take a few pictures and see what we got.
Okay.
Uh, if we have to do much tearing stuff up, like you said, that-
I don't, I don't wanna wreck what it looks like.
Right.
Yeah.
It's feasible to do all that restoration and keep the look. I, I, it'd be a shame if we tear it apart.
We don't wanna do a bunch of-
Right, yeah.
To make a-
Air checks, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to say that out loud.
Thank you.
Last thing is, I mean, how much are we gonna have to tear up, uh, and put something back to make it look the same? We don't have any, the type of materials that-
That this man certainly seems to have access to.
Right.
Yeah.
I would say we'd investigate that within a week or ten days and-
Before the closing, yeah.
Bring it back, uh, before the closing, make up our mind.
Yeah, but you guys meet August first.
Yeah.
I think we should just put in there, like, sixty days to get it out, and if we can't get it done without wrecking stuff, and within that time, then he gets to keep it. That's what I suggest.
That way it's better, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty clear that the chances of him tearing it down are very, very slim. So, I don't think us not getting the bell is a huge deal, personally.
That's my suggestion.
I guess we'll go with that, something in that range. You've got the, you've got the drift of what we're talking about-
Yeah.
And your handling-
Yeah.
All of this, so. In the meantime, we'll get together and see what kind of performance it's gonna be to get it out of there.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, not knowing what it is, but the ladder truck will whip.
And we might have to father this to extend.
Yeah, well, you can get pretty close to it. You might be able to use that for the crane, I don't know.
I'm not a professional rigger, and I'm not insured for that under the town workers' comp, so let's, uh-
We'll just investigate right now.
We're just gonna investigate right now.
Right. So, give him, you know, have the closing on the first, and then we'll investigate the bell and stuff. So, give us sixty days and we should know. We'll probably know way before that, but we might even know before the first.
But just in case, like, we can't get it out, or we can't get somebody there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, I feel like sixty days is more than enough time if we can't get it out to get someone to get it out.
Right.
And if we can't, then we can't, and-
That sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know, I guess we, got the ball rolling.
Okay. Thanks, Alan.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it very much.
Um, so you and I will-
Yep.
Get together.
Yep.
On a, you want me to just email it to you, but make the sixty day change and email it to you to sign electronically?
You can, or I can come over. I'm not going anywhere, so.
Okay.
All right. And get me out of the office.
Okay, all right.
A big drive to Sunday River.
Tomorrow on Facebook.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, you can do that.
Excellent.
Thank you very much for all your-
You're welcome.
Hard work for this.
Yes. And one other question, who do you use as the pool? It's gonna do the attorney side for the town.
We use Jim Katsifakis, he's from, is it Perkins and Thompson, and Thompson and Perkins?
Perkins. But you'll give me that?
Yeah.
I'll send it over to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Super.
Or say back with some, is that what you have?
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Uh, we take care of your business.
Yes, we have, yeah. I just wanna give you guys an update on roads and the, and the signs.
Okay, then I guess we'll continue on, get the town quirk report.
So, we have twelve means left now, so we're dwindling on those, which is very nice. Four of them have means from last year, so we have to pave those off first in order to get to this, so. So, if you minus that from the twelve, we're, we're doing really well, I think. I go to a Moses, which is inland fish and wildlife training, next week in Rangeley. And it's really fun.
So, maybe you can get a question answered then. Like, when we do the ranger and we put tracks on, and you know, winter time, um, we use it for grooming. So, do we do a one, like, usually, like, the snowmobiles and tuckers and stuff like that, it's a one-time deal, and we only have to do it once. And we don't have to do it again, but then in the summertime, when we take the tracks off, we, we probably still have to register as a-
I believe you do.
Yeah, but ask where it's municipal fire, and then-
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're talking snowmobile club now, but fire department has the same thing.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I know privately they do, unless you're just trying to get from, like, your camp down to the water to ice fish, you don't have to.
You're supposed to register to put tracks on, like the snowmobile.
Right.
Yes, if you're going out on the trips, yes.
Right.
I've asked different people about the snowmobile club, 'cause I think, like, for the snow machines, you only register them one time, as long as you've got them-
Right.
For grooming. And I, I don't know, like, with the ranger with the tracks, in fact, that's what we use it for. We could do it a one-time deal, but then summertime, we're probably gonna have to go back and register like a regular. No one's really answered that question.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the fire department's ever been registered.
I was gonna say, I don't think it has.
Yeah, years ago, we had done the first one. Do you still have, do you have the same one, or?
Same one, yeah.
Okay, it was registered once.
I don't think it ever gets renewed every year.
Yeah, and I don't know if they have to, but it's worth asking that too.
When it leaves our town, like, let's say we bring it to Gilead for a forest fire. If it sustains or causes any damages there, and it's not registered, we could get a citation. So.
When it has left the town, we're in.
That's right, because, right, in, in, rightly so. I mean, we're mutual aid, that's what we do, but, yeah, if anything, same with our fire trucks. We drive around a newery, we're fine, they don't need to be registered, 'cause we're, it's a municipal fire truck.
Well-
But we mutual aid everything.
It used to be, had to be registered, if you went to the fire, it didn't have to be, but when you came back, it had to be.
Makes sense.
That's good.
Yeah, yep.
So, then with that, we just write out a bill of sales for that time, then when the head comes, make it better. But that's just one question that you're doing.
Certainly.
That hopefully get us to do with something right, you know? Some people just say, just take it anyway, but at some point, I mean, we've had wardens and stuff, no, but they've never really said anything.
Right.
I even asked a warden once, and he says, I-
It's a gray area, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah.
Down in the main street, do you have a report?
Um, I got the pre-audit today, was going through that, um, to finalize it. There's, she's supposed to be, she's gotta try to come to the meeting on the first, but it might be the fifteenth, it all depends on how. To go over the audit and everything else, yeah. But it looks pretty good. Um, nothing else big and fancy going on at the moment. You got any news, Rob?
I do though.
Yeah, the office is closed on the twenty-sixth, 'cause we got training. And I did hear from Bethel about their rec department, the rec director is getting done. It's very, very busy. So, they wanna talk turkey with all the other towns about the rec department, other towns will spend more money. And I said, well, we pay twenty-five hundred dollars now, which I know is just a drop in the bucket, the insurance is crazy. But it's, it's work, you know, we'll talk about it, so the managers will get together eventually and have a lunch and discuss it.
We don't have a lot of student teams in there, do we?
Well, actually, we do have a lot of students in the rec department. 'Cause it's, it's everything, it's the scan, it's the soccer, it's the cross, it's the basketball, baseball. Um, even, yeah, she has all these other little things that they do.
That'll probably be brought up at the joint meeting.
Probably. And then, um, solid waste, hopefully we get together on that soon, 'cause she, I've been bugging her and those, I've been bugging her.
I see you had it down, but didn't know which two days it was.
Right, right, so we're working on that. And, uh, assessors were out and about doing some of their work last week. Um, and one of them, I think, is coming back Monday to do some more. So, we'll be getting ready to commit checks as an August. All goes well.
Getting back to the, um, solid waste, have we ever checked into combining with Northern Office in Mexico, or something? And see what that would do? I mean-
Nope.
Things haven't really gone well with where we are. I mean-
Things haven't gone anywhere, never looked well.
Well, I don't know if that's an option, or what it would be.
Right.
Maybe we just don't wanna go that route, I don't know.
Well, it's worth asking questions, we can ask questions.
I mean, I drove by it a couple times, and said, why don't we just check in here if-
And they're open, they're open, like, every day.
I have no idea.
Well, I mean, it's a lot further for us to travel, but if, if we were into that, then maybe-
They would.
I'm charging for your trash.
But maybe if we went that way, maybe Hannover would go that way too, right?
Well, I don't, I just don't know. I mean, they probably, they may not wanna get involved with the ski.
Right.
But they have Black Mountain and-
Right.
Some of the others, I mean, it's completely, it's a little bit smaller scale, but-
I think it was Archie's that we had inquired, I had inquired-
About door-to-door pickup?
Doing door-to-door pickup, and they weren't, didn't seem to-
They didn't get any kind of-
They didn't have the help, I guess.
Who knows that?
No, I haven't checked it.
Nope, I can ask, and they contacted, had care and said that you were gonna be our alternate. And we have a letter that we have to send to the, um, board president, which is Paul Chase.
Yeah.
But I gotta get to him first.
He's a player chief, ran for Auburn.
Fire chief, oh, okay.
But he's got up, he lives in Roopford, so he's got up Roopford address too.
Oh, Bert is supposed to get to me for shit. If you're listening to your podcast.
I'm a big time dog.
So, we've got that ready. Is that good?
If we're good, I guess maybe we can do her.
Make a motion we adjourn at five fifty.
One second, yeah.
One second, and then we adjourn at five fifty.
Yeah, we adjourn. The batteries, okay.
Well, we start on cell phone times, I figure we'll end on cell phone.
Yeah. Even work, that's a lot of it. Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Yeah, you too.
Guess we helped you a lot. Thanks for helping.